Hello, David, how are you?
Yeah, that's the best way.
I think we're gonna need the executive session today. We continue to have two meetings once a week.
Now, if you call here tomorrow morning, they get suspended in like seven to eight.
Oh, okay.
But he does leave at eight o'clock.
Oh, okay.
To go to his inspections and stuff.
I'll talk to the people, we just gotta take it.
Is there a chair of honor or? Oh, all right.
You'd like? Don't worry, I'd have to phone him instead.
Is this all ninety pages?
Yes, it should be all ninety, two sides, just two sides which do six.
I see it's two, I see it's two.
Looking for some more homework? Need to ask me to do some more? The perfect cure for insomnia. And for bad eyes, well, not cure for a bad eye, but a typical. When you need glasses, certainly.
Is one heard from John?
Yes, I just got an email from him, he's gonna be a little bit late.
Oh, okay.
So we'll start without him, and he said he's gotta leave early at around five.
So we'll end with him, okay.
We'll funk him without him. So let's get started. Call a meeting order at four oh three. Something like that, don't call back. My watch says four oh three. Uh, we will not be going into executive session, as I was previously coached. So we will go into our normal meeting, and we'll start with item number one. Which is Board of Selectmen Budget Conferences, and the first one, the seat of honor is Mr. Close.
Can I just add that you're recording?
Oh, yes, 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 yes. Yes, our recording secretary is recording the meeting. And, uh, I would ask if there's anyone else recording the meeting?
Yes, we're recording.
Gage is on inspections.
Are we on video as well?
Pardon?
Are we on video as well?
Uh, video and audio, yes. And I believe our agreement would still stand if you use it for your own private use.
No, I won't.
You put it on, where'd you put it?
On YouTube.
On YouTube?
Oh, let me explain, it was a discussion about that, and I said I would hold it.
Yep.
Pending the part from KP Law.
Yep.
I talked with Kelly, she said it was okay. So it was about a month later that I finally updated it, sent it up to YouTube, but since then I've been, I don't know if I'm returning.
Where would one find them on YouTube, under what?
Um.
I don't know what the.
I, I, you have to do a fine, of course, of sorts, but it would be, the labels of them have to do with Board of Selectmen Meeting in Topsfield, those are the, those are like the key words, including the dates.
And how do people know that it's not an official, it's not sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, but merely a taking of the Board of Selectmen meeting?
It's not part of any particular Topsfield site or anything of that nature, it's not linked to the Topsfield sites. It could be if somebody wants to do that, it's up to you if you'd like to do that.
If they have a note on it saying that they're not official?
Yeah, it doesn't have a note that says it is, and it's not in any way linked to the town. For example, the one that's used by Boxford DA and CTV. They're not, it's not linked on that at all.
I'll take a look at it and see if I can come up with some sort of clarification point if necessary.
Well, I also don't want to be responsible for the permanent, um, the, the housing of a permanent public record that hasn't been officially adopted or voted by the Board of Selectmen. That needs to be a private, basically a private recording. The board didn't have any discussion about posting anything. We know that it's in accordance with open meeting law, that someone can report a meeting. We never discussed whether that should be a member of the Board of Selectmen. But I would say that a protocol discussion would be in order for the board to make sure that it's being uploaded in the right perspective, that we aren't inviting any public records issues by posting it. Being overly cautious now because we have no choice, but I think that information like that could be misrepresented. It's a private recording, and that it might invite other public policy issues with regard to the Board of Selectmen. And the responsibilities on the part of the town government to keep that record or to have to maintain it. Maybe that's not the case, I would hope not. And certainly, if it is a policy decision of the Board of Selectmen to record all work sessions, that there should be a policy discussion about whether or not we should be engaging the Boxford Cable Television in that purpose, since that is the mission for their role with the town. And that if it's worthy enough for recording, then I think that the board has the ability to discuss the merits of that and the cost related to that. So I would just ask that maybe the chairman, if he wants to put something on a future agenda, so we have a more thorough discussion of the protocol for those recordings.
I will, I'll take a look, I'll take a look at it and see what it looks like, and we will put it on agenda. I agree with a lot of what you said. Dick asked me permission if we can record it, and I said, yes, if I could stop it, I would, but I can't, so.
And we're still just focusing at the unilegt officials?
It's, no, it's focused on the meeting in general.
You know, invitation.
Even looking at.
Probably covered the whole world.
It covers whatever it can, but it's basically on the, but it's the meeting, I mean, the meeting is the.
What Town Council said is that any member of the public can come into a meeting and report. What Town Council wasn't asked about is the responsibility of the Board of Selectmen in terms of sharing that information, is it public record or not? Or is it a private record by, by one person? I believe it to be a private record by one person. But if it's being posted on YouTube, is that it's an official public record? Or is it an official recording? I think that we might need to just look at that again and again on a posted meeting.
I agree.
If I could maybe come up, I don't see it as an official recording, because there's no official organization doing this or whatever. I don't see it as an official recording, but I think we ought to move on and discuss it.
Well, we will, I would just add that you might be right, and I'm, I agree with you. And I feel that same way, but the people that's looking at it on YouTube may not know.
Yeah, yeah, it's fine.
Okay, let's move on. What page are we on?
Okay, um, inspections Department is Department two four one.
Four four.
And that is.
I mean.
It's the easiest way to.
Well, that's our inspection right here.
Two four.
Right at the.
After police and fire, I guess?
Yeah.
One more, here we go. Yep. I'd just like to say something about the presentation, Kelly. You've gotta fix this so we can read it. I mean, I couldn't read it on my, my computer screen. This, you almost need magnifying glass. So I, I'd like you to figure out a way to get it onto a piece of paper, size-wise, so it fills the sheet or something.
In that, in that thing, I would like to receive it as machine-readable content.
Well, everyone received it by PDF, that's machine readable.
The content inside of it, that is to say, in Excel format. It's the best format that we can get out of, out of UNIS, and it makes it much easier to, to work with, and we can save a lot of paper in the process.
These budgets here aren't given back in Excel format. These are, this is sent to the department. Like, would you consider this readable, or is that even?
Well, it's the same size.
Same size, okay.
It's basically the same size.
So it's just, it's just the.
And it's clearer, I can read that one easier than this.
That's clear.
Yeah.
This has been a scan of a.
By the way, I'm not suggesting that we can do that immediately.
Yeah.
Okay, but I think we need to look into how we can make a better presentation here.
Mm-hmm.
Now, let's move on.
Glenn, did you wanna talk about any, any, I mean, everything, is it within, within the guidelines?
Yeah, everything, everything was within the, um, the FinCom guidelines, and the wages were taken out of the, um, taken off the sheets from the, um.
Where'd you get the wages from? I'm trying to understand the process. Did FinCom work the wages out for you?
Yeah, who does, I'm not sure who does that, Kelly.
It's the pay grid, that's the.
It's the pay grid, all right. Is he a pay grid for the town?
How did it actually get worked out? Where, how did the number get put there?
The departments are asked to provide a number. I also do a worksheet, just very simple, very brief for each person. We have supporting documentation that just looks at all of the numbers, so that we have a way to collect the data.
But Kelly, I'd like to know the process, very quickly.
We take a whole grid.
How, how the, that gets into your budget? How, how the number came up with?
I put it in. They give, they give me a piece of paper that says these, this is, this is what your proposed salary is going to be for fiscal nineteen. And I plug that figure into the Excel spreadsheet that they, that they supplied to me there.
Okay, and, and where did that number come from that you asked them to plug in? You calculated this?
I calculate it on a side, on the side, to verify the numbers. To verify the numbers.
For each of the departments, you do that?
For, this was, this was just for the non-contracted people who are on the, on the pay grid.
Okay.
We have a salary grid that was submitted to all the department heads for FY eighteen. And that included a two percent quota to keep up with the market. And then you take that grid, and you make an assumption that everyone who is eligible for a step and is then performing in accordance with their goals and objectives, that they've met that, and you make a projection based on July one. So in Glenn's case, he took all of the people from his department, he looked at the classification grid, figured out the hourly rate, times that by the number of hours per week, and times that by the number of weeks in the year to come up with the number. And then he adds all of the salaries, all of the wages together, and he puts that information on the spreadsheet. He prints it out, he signs off on it, he submits it to the town accountant. She has her numbers, we also have ours. It's simply applying the approved pay classification grid with the departmental staff and their personnel plus.
So you take the weekly, monthly, whatever amount, and you calculate it based on how you see the hours of overtime and that, that's all.
Yeah, well, there's, there's, no, there is no overtime, I'm salaried.
If there what?
Yeah, yes, yes, the premise is, the premise is there, but.
And things like longevity, you put in?
Yes, there's a spot on the budget.
You calculate the longevity, you figure out how many years?
I'm given that figure.
You're given the figure?
Yes.
And where does that figure come from?
Based on.
No, not you, it's given to you by?
Pay grid.
So, so do you do that?
I update the pay grid.
So do you calculate for Glenn, you help him out by calculating what his longevity is?
I calculate, no, not the longevity, I verify the payroll for the non-contracted people who are on the payroll, on the pay grid.
Who, who calculates for Glenn the longevity? He said he gets the longevity, that's great, but, but who, how does he get, how, who comes up with that number?
Who do you determine what the number is?
It's a personnel, it's in the personnel bylaw.
But, but who? Who gives Glenn the number?
Glenn puts the number, provides the.
He puts the number in the sheet, but he said he's given the number.
Well, it's, it's like, for me, Mary Lou's been here longer than I have, she gets one amount, I get another amount. So, and it's, and it's based on the personnel policy.
Usually, it's the same from year to year, except for when they're getting to another five years.
This year, I'll exceed, I'll exceed that, exceed that.
But, but as soon as somebody flips up a year, we're trying to make sure of it, that we have accurate stuff in this and that.
It's accurate, the department heads look and they say, oh, Mary Lou's been here for ten years or eleven years, and they put the number in, based on the personnel rules and regulations, it's quite simple, actually.
Thank you. Okay, Glenn, go on.
So the budget, there was, you know, everything was, there was, you know, zero increases in the, in all of the expenses. The only increases were in the, the salaries and wages. And that, again, was, was according to the, to the pay grid. So it was a total, total increase for the, from fiscal eighteen to fiscal nineteen would be five thousand three hundred fourteen dollars and thirty-two cents. Which would bring the total budget to, proposed budget to one forty-eight, three thirty, thirty-two. I had Mary Lou give me the numbers so far for the collections, for what the department has taken in this year so far, this fiscal year so far. So from July one until today, department's taken in a hundred and twenty-three thousand five hundred thirty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. We've issued, between electrical, building, plumbing, gas, sheet metal, and mechanical permits, we've issued four hundred and fifty-three permits. As of today, for just, for this fiscal year from July first to now.
Now, see, Kelly, back to my point, I can't follow any of these numbers now, because I can't read them.
I, I understand, but we're dealing with a lot of information, and we sent it electronically, and if you can zoom in, we're happy to help. We can, we can make more copies. I, I didn't realize this was an issue until this moment, I would have, of course, done anything possible to address that, I didn't realize that was an issue. I mean, I, it obviously is, because it's very small, but when everyone got it via PDF, I just assumed people would zoom in on the information.
I have a comment, yes, David?
See, Jessica, if you print on legal paper, you know, fourteen inches long, that might resolve the issue, if it's big enough. I tried that. It stays, it stays the same size.
I'm gonna make an offer, I mean, seriously. I'm willing to work with folks in town hall here to maybe work on some processes, so we can get it a better size and better quality.
I'm happy to put a copy right now and leave it in larger quarters.
I'm willing to help. We've already covered that. Okay. Give her a chance to do something, we told her there's an issue, let's let her try to fix it.
But the other option is you could also fund the assistant town accountant for six more hours and give us the resources to do it, that's a good option.
I think, not now, but I think for the next, next meeting, I'd like to discuss what the six hours will give us, it may be a good deal, for, for the next two months or something like that, so we get good data.
This data is fine, there's no question about the data. In fact, we've delivered ninety needed worth of data, and we're spending this much time spending.
Well, I'm, I'm about to say, if we're gonna spend this much time on every line item budget, we're gonna be here until two thousand seventeen, or two thousand twenty-one. Okay?
Yeah.
I, I, I really don't have any problem with the data, all right? I'm willing to accept the fact that we have qualified people doing these kinds of jobs. That's who, that's who we hire, that's who we appoint, in my opinion, and I'm satisfied with that, okay? I'm not, I'm not into trying to throw people under the bus, because the data is not right. If we find a mistake, we'll fix it, but I'm assuming that it's right, and we're here to go over that, okay? So let's move on. You're about done.
I'm about done. Sniff a fork in me, I'm done.
What's the, the ten thousand, what is it, other expenses, the ten, is this yours? Increase is requested based on previous, what's that?
Yeah, it's the next page, next page.
Total requested increase, Jack, was five thousand three hundred and fourteen thirty-two.
Thank you.
And it's all, that's all in salaries and wages.
So where does the ten thousand dollar number come from?
That's from a different department.
Oh, that's the next department?
Yeah.
Oh, it's probably one twenty-four.
There is, um, this, this, this departmental budget meets all the FinCom guidelines, and that's exactly.
Well, obviously it does, because he had a zero line item budget, and the only thing that he had to increase was grid and, and/or union contracts.
Right, right. So everything's within the guidelines, and the reason we wanted to have these meetings were really, I mean, the numbers, it's pretty science. I mean, you put in the right numbers, the reason we wanted to encourage the meetings is to talk and to see if there's any particular challenges or issues that may be right around the corner, either it's maybe next fiscal year, or maybe things are going well. So this is really the board's chance to say, you know, Glenn, are there any issues that you foresee affecting next year's ability to make budget? Or how are revenues, do revenues look strong in comparison with your department expended shores? What are some of the needs you see maybe in the next few years, or even in next year? I mean, if Mary Lou's, I'm not, I don't wanna be premature, if, if there's a potential of any personnel changes, then now would be the time maybe to identify that, but.
Do you see anything like that, Glenn?
Uh, well, Mary Lou's going to be retiring.
Yes, I heard.
So there'll be, there'll be some changes there, but, um, you know, I, I think that the plan for the, when we get into the, um, the refurbished town hall, that, um, you know, there's gonna be three departments together in one area, and, um, and I, you know, there's a great opportunity there. Kelly and I had talked about this before.
Coalesce the workforce.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
So, and Kelly and I had had a conversation about that a while ago.
Okay.
So.
Well, maybe we can, or maybe we can't, because.
Right, but it's.
You gotta wait to see how that plays out.
Exactly, this, this, we're, we're a little ways away from that, but that, you know, that would be the goal, with the right person in there, all right? It, it could work, and it would be a huge benefit for the three departments that are going to be in there and, and the town.
All, all I care about at this point in time is that you've thought about it, you recognize that that's a possibility.
Yes.
And we move forward when we get into.
And I don't see her leaving, if I can interrupt, I, I don't see her leaving as, as costing us anything. You know, there's some preparation that we're going to have to do, but I, we can handle that, I'll, I'll work closely with Kelly on that, and we'll make sure that everything is done that can be done.
Sure.
Same as we always do.
Well, thank you for being in the guidelines of the FinCom, that's very helpful, because we don't have to worry about it in overall. But the question will be asked, of course, of each department as you come, whether, within guidelines or not, do you see ways in which we can reduce our costs? As you know, a lot of pressure on taxes, with some of the increases. Is there, is there, is there any areas that, you know, you can possibly think about?
Not, not in this budget, though, same, the same as this, this budget has been the same, pretty much, for, I've been here coming up on twenty years, and it's been, it hasn't been a lot different in the last fifteen to eighteen years. It's increased, you know, that whatever the minimums were that, well, the maximums were that we could increase, if they told us we could take two percent, we took two percent, and the years that they told us we couldn't increase, we didn't increase.
Yes.
So the budget's not a lot different now than it's been for several years. You know, based on the amount of money that the, that the department takes in, we, on a fiscal year basis, we always, always return money to the town, but we need, we need so much to, we just need enough to be able to run the department. And, um, and this budget pretty much does that, and it does it, and it does it comfortably. And whatever isn't used, you know, certainly goes back to the town, but we've put, we've put a lot of money back to the town over the years. I mean, the, the actual, the expense, the, the expenses in, in the budget, they pretty much get spent every year, with the normal things that it costs to run an office with four people in it. But the department is still, we're still busy.
Based on the number of permits you issued, four hundred and some odd. So far this year? Yes, you are, thank you, Glenn, I, I don't wanna hold you anymore, so, thank you.
Am I just missing?
One more question.
Sure.
How much in revenue does your department take in, in a given year, approximately?
It, it varies, I think last year, if I'm not mistaken, last year we took in a hundred and, I'm gonna say a hundred and fifty somewhere, probably. So, maybe, maybe more than that. I mean, obviously, we have years that are up and down, but this is, like this, this year here, this fiscal year that we're in, we have a project going across the street, that's, um, that's good. There's a lot of, there's a lot of lots and a lot of different things happening in town that we'll keep it going.
Thank you for the job you do, by the way.
You're welcome, thank you.
That's, that's what's important, the people in the town.
I only have positive comments, I only get positive feedback on the department. So we have, we have good department, we have good people in the department, so.
Well, I have said over and over and over again, that this town ought to be pleased with the amount of people that we've got in various positions.
Absolutely.
And volunteers. It's the same thing, and we ought to be very pleased about that.
We work closely with the fire department, so, and they're, they're just, they're just awesome to work with.
Yeah. I understand, I understand.
All right.
Yes, it's the financial management team?
Yes, it's the financial management team.
Thank you, Glenn.
I'll see you tomorrow.
Okay, any other comments about that budget? Next up is Tom Clark. I would ask, as well as to come far.
Nine sixty-one.
What is it?
Nine sixty-one.
One sixty-one, there it is.
There should be a total of one, two, three, four, five pages for Tom Clark Department.
Yep. That's good.
And, um, Beth, did you wanna give an introduction, or, um, did you want, how would you like to?
No, I didn't really prepare anything. Well, and by the way, into that.
Well, or, so start by saying, is the budget that was submitted within the guidelines of the FinCom, based on this front page, this document that was submitted and signed off by the, to the, and submitted to the town accountant?
Yeah, that's what I was.
Okay.
Page one is.
Page one is within guidelines.
Yes.
And then what you've done on.
And, and that's the same situation that we had before. Everything is level funded, except for grid issues.
Exactly.
Or, in some cases, contract issues, in your case, it's not a contract.
Right.
Okay.
So what, what Beth did with, you know, I worked, I've worked with Beth on this, so if you don't, if you jump in if I'm misstating anything. What we were really doing is trying to explain on B one, the difference of the numbers, because there was a change in staff in FY eighteen. And then on the second page of B one, she identifies that the election was planned and budgeted. So that varies from year to year, and what's the major issue this year is?
We're gonna have the elections.
Instead of the one.
Yes.
And so, last year, we were explaining that there was a decrease in the budget because of the number of elections, so that's gonna fluctuate from year to year. We just wanted a chance to call that out, because that's something we don't really have any control over. It just does fluctuate from year to year. And that's also explained on the, um, the B two for other expense line items. These are the operating expenses, the B two forms represent, um, guidelines or items that are seen at. The B two forms represent, um, guidelines or items that are seen as necessary, but not within the guidelines. So the, the FinCom guidelines ask that it even be called out. And so what we've, what Beth has done here is really just identifying where those costs are. And, uh, again, the elections is a major contributor for that, that line item. And then finally, on the supplemental line items, there are two, there are two items that we talked about submitting and these are really the two, they're called supplemental, otherwise known as essential unfunded. FinCom guidelines stated that if there are requests that are currently unfunded, that those be called out and that those would be identified and submitted. Um, and we're asking that, so this will be the only B three sheet you're going to see from the departments under the Board of Selectmen. And this really represents two additional expenses. One is, um, based on the personnel cost and the other is based on some software that Beth has identified and has heard about that may assist us in trying to track many of the, um, the mandates for the public records laws. As you know, last year, there's a major, um, update to the public records laws. It placed, um, a, a major emphasis on the role of town clerk. It automatically designates the town clerk, yes, the records access officer. And so we have over a year, almost a year of data to support the, the level, the number of calls, the number of requests for public information. There's been over a hundred eleven, possibly more by now. And they're becoming increasingly more challenging to track, to follow up, to, um, deal with all the, the records custodians. So Beth can tell you more about this, but what's being proposed, um, similar to what we asked and requested last year, which was additional staffing resources for the town clerk's department, which was subsequently, um, turned down by the FinCom. However, um, we did make it known last year that there was a major unknown factor in how this new public records law and the updates, what kind of impact that would have on our DDD operations. And I think that we have a lot of good, solid data that shows this is over two requests a week that are being added on top of the other existing work that already needs to be done by the town clerk's office. There's a, um, proposal here for some software that for some upfront, one-time upfront costs, um, I believe it's twenty-five hundred for one year would be a one-time cost. And then it would require two thousand annual subscription for other years. Just essentially allowing us to track, retrieve and, um, better manage the information flow and a lot of the, um, timing mandates that are required by the state with regard to public records and the amount of requests that we've received at the town. So that's a major, um, change to the workload on the department, which is why I fully supported her coming up with these requests and submitting these to the next level. Beth, do you have anything that you wanted to discuss with the board before we go on?
Right, I think what Kelly, I just want to emphasize what Kelly said. Last year going into budget season, public records, um, was new. Nobody really knew how it was gonna affect, no clerks really knew how it was going to affect their offices. And we have, um, now we have almost a whole year under our belts and it affects us quite a bit. It, I would estimate that it takes up, public records has added forty to fifty percent to my workload, to, to my time. It takes up forty to fifty percent of my time. Sometimes on a given, I mean, there were times back in June, in July, where I feel like it was ninety percent of my day or my week went to public records. We had some particularly, um, tricky ones going on. And, um, I've talked to some clerks and some clerks have talked about how even the simplest request, it takes you like two hours by the time you, you know, you have to acknowledge it, track it, you know, pass it along. We are not alone, clerks all over the state are grappling with this. But, um, it, it's really, um, been a real, um, it's, it's been a, it's a, it's been tough to.
Transition.
It's been, yeah, it's been a tough transition. It was something that was never dealt with by any other prior clerks in Knoxville. Because it was something that came in January first.
You know why? Because in my opinion, the public trusted the people that were doing the work.
Right.
Okay? And for some reason now, they don't. And that's the problem.
I think, you know, this was a long time coming, this, you know, this, the public records law. It was a while coming and I, you know, I think that the legislature quite flamed it. The input I've gotten when I've spoken to some of the representatives, it's, they were like, oops, we kind of.
I have been told by several of them that we didn't do a very good job.
Oops, yes, we didn't do it right.
Mind you, they're not subject to a lot of those same requirements.
It's easy for them to hide under a rock. Did they fund it?
Did they fund it?
No. Oh, you need an unfunded mandate. Of course. Unfunded law, okay, go ahead.
Do you belong to the, like, a state town clerks association?
I do, yeah.
Does that get in newsletters or things?
Um, I don't see much in the newsletters, but, um, just anecdotally, we had our, um, our most recent meeting was just last week and I'm sitting at the table of, I think there were six of them, six of us at the table I was at, and public records was the major discussion. And, um, clerks talked about how it definitely has increased all of their workloads. They feel like even the simplest of requests is, you know, you're touching it. The, the amount of time it takes to, um, handle them within the law, you know, because we have strict guidelines with the law. You're, you're putting, picking it up, putting it down, touching it, it's, it's, you know, and you're multitasking with everything else that you're trying to do in the clerk's office. It's, um, it's difficult to handle and it's stressful. It's, it's very stressful. I don't think I can even touch on how stressful it is to, to, um, to manage it. It's something that's always on my mind, always continually on my mind. You know, no matter, even if I don't, if I feel like I don't have, um, anything that's pending, too pending, it's, it's constantly on my mind, constantly double checking, I'm constantly checking my email.
It also, I mean, implicit is that it puts pressure on you to develop legal analysis.
Right, and that's the other point.
And it also costs the town.
Right.
People make, uh, comment, you know, don't go to, uh, Copeland and Page and so forth. But you have a responsibility to protect the town and there's very complex issues. Because of requests, even under the law, there are exemptions.
Right.
There are privileges and that's.
I said that myself on the phone in exasperation one day to the supervisor of records. I didn't know when I took this job, I was gonna need a law degree. And it was the exact same comment that one of the other clerks said to me on her own. And I said, I said the exact same thing a month ago to the, to the supervisor of records. But that's how clerks are well feeling. We didn't know we'd have to be lawyers to take, to do this job. That's what it's becoming.
If I can, I forgive, is the mask relatable association? Do they have a political action committee or anything like that that is concerned about the degree towards this as?
They, they are concerned in these types of stories in real life experiences or things that I bring back to them as a member of the executive committee. Because, but this is, this is a recent change, it's only been a year. A lot of other communities maybe don't have the same circumstances as we do. We have, one of our requesters, fifty percent of these requests are from one person.
But some of this do, because we've seen.
Oh, yeah, yes, yeah. There has been one, yeah.
So, but it's a learning experience because each time we do something that we believe is in accordance with public records and then if someone says, oh, wait, it should be that way, now we have to get Copeland and Page involved because we're looking to protect the best interests of the town. And there's so many caveats, there's so many parts of the law that haven't been tested yet that we're literally living the beta version of this new law.
Yeah, that's interesting. You know, I don't want to go too far, I think it's in a politician's face. I don't think it's that uncommon for legislation being enacted and then some remedies be required. Don't go too far afield, it really reminds me of, there's a real estate power association that's very active. And it's not that uncommon that the legislature passes sweeping changes. Like say, for example, the probate administration, it doesn't realize how much it affects every day in a real estate law. So they've been very successful in getting things improved, getting the pendulum to swing a little bit backwards.
And those things are being done to the extent possible. At the end of the day, it still comes down to us being able to respond within ten business days, get the response out. And within so many, so it always is coming back to us. And in some communities, there's sort of this level of, okay, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna learn this step by step, we'll get through it. And in this case, instead of it slowing down and being better, it's just picking up and getting down much more demanding, especially when you've got repeats of the same requests coming in through different departments. And what we've been able to do as successfully as possible, given the circumstances, is be able to tell the department heads that if you've got a request, it needs to go to the town clerk. Doesn't mean you don't have to, you know, find responsive records, but we need to streamline this because she needs to have a log. This is something we've never done before and I think it's very, um, it, it's a lot of work, but it also is very indicative of the, the ongoing necessity and need for the types of records that are being requested, they need to be searched and they need to be estimated. So it's a major issue that isn't, it's not gonna necessarily go away. In fact, you know, we're hoping that getting additional staffing in this, in this new software tool will help to mitigate some of it. But it's, it's quite possible that if fifty percent of these are coming from one person, as those continue to get progressively more assertive with requests. And these are just a hundred eleven requests. Within each one of these requests are multiple documents.
Multiple.
So this probably represents at least two hundred fifty requests for documents. And when you have to, at least. So it's, it's exponentially a major, major impact to our ability and the clerk's ability to do her job. Now, when she has a, a, an issue, it also involves me as well. Because now I'm writing a four-page letter.
Right.
We're both signing off on them, but I need to be involved to make sure that we're not going to Copeland and Page unless absolutely necessary.
But it's sometimes you need to.
But we need to.
Well, and I have to tell you, we, when I call the supervisor of records, and this is another complaint that the clerks all voiced last week, the supervisor of records doesn't give you any help. Their response is always.
Talk to town council.
Talk to town council.
Yeah.
It's always talk to town council.
They don't give legal advice. And they always err on the side of, well, if you're not sure, then just give it. And so that takes, again, more time. So I think that this is certainly, um, a worthwhile discussion in terms of policy unfunded mandates of the town. It needs to be at least addressed and identified as a potential for the FY nineteen budget if we're going to have any success at all of keeping our head above water with regard to the mandate that has been set upon.
The one thing that I can't quite mean from the description is.
Sure.
How many hours?
Oh.
How many hours, well?
Is this? It, it says something about filling in for the.
Yes, it's part-time clerk.
Twelve, twelve.
It's twelve hours a week.
And the intent of that is to cover, so the part-time person who's in the position right now is nineteen? So we're trying, what we're trying to do is to provide at least two people in the office during regular business hours. So the difference between thirty-four and the nineteen is the twelve hours. Did I say that right? Was that the right, okay. Thirty-four, so the number of hours.
It's fifteen hours.
There's fifteen, whatever the number of hours is.
Oh, okay, fifteen.
I'm sorry, I'm like.
Fifteen instead of twelve.
I've been looking at spreadsheets.
Fifteen, right.
Fifteen, one.
Yeah.
So it's fifteen hours, is that what this number is?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Fifteen additional hours.
Seventeen thousand is fifteen additional hours.
Is it twelve fifteen?
So it's fifteen, it's fifteen hours.
I'm sorry, apologies.
Nineteen to thirty-five, uh, to thirty-four.
We, like, thirty-four hours of coverage so that there's always somebody there being able to help customers while.
While I'm dealing with this.
And other items like elections and town meeting and, yeah.
Whatever the job is supposed to be.
And my other question is, is on the software, is this, uh, software, or at least a component of which that was actually developed for this origin?
Yes.
So it's specific to this?
This was a specific, a specific software that was designed, um, around, with, with the Massachusetts Public Records Law in hand. And so, um, you know, right now, this is my Excel spreadsheet for the log.
Yep.
And things come in by email and so I have to track the emails on the email side. I take a records request and I set up, yeah, it's not integrated, I set up something on my computer, on the, you know, my hard drive side to, you know, log the request, to, um, receive the request to any responses that we have. So I have stuff on my computer, I have, then I have to match it up with emails to send it all out again. And what this does is it really is a system where the, um, everything is right there. So, um.
Put in the documents, Beth, not the documents, just the, the metadata about what you're doing, right?
Nope, the, the documents would even be available.
Are part of the database.
Yeah.
As the database gets going.
Because, because many of the documents hopefully we put online.
Well, and that, this takes care of that. This takes care of that. So.
Yeah, do you, we don't want multiple copies of it.
Well, what this does is that, um, this is an example.
Maybe it isn't necessarily with the details, no, it's up to you.
Yeah, well, no, when you, one, it resides on the website and people can click into it to make a, to make a, um, request. And then they can also set up their own profile so they can track their requests.
Okay.
And, um, other people can go in to see all the requests. Like this is, um, what it would look like if you went in, this is Chump's, I believe.
And Chump's.
They, they've already got this system. This system is already being used in, I don't know, last I checked, there are up to like twenty-six towns in Massachusetts.
Have you talked to anybody who uses it?
Yes, I've talked to, um, several clerks that have used it. Lynn Field is using it, I talked to Rockport last week, they, they've just started with, they've just come along with it.
So not to, not to go further than, than the purpose of this meeting, but so this said, just this one thing. It says searchable request list.
Right.
So if I, if I was, if I was a resident and I wanted a particular document, I could see whether someone was arguing with this.
This is what that page looks like. So if you go into it, you see you have, um, this lists all their documents, all their requests that they had and you can search by request, um, or you can search by your specific number.
And if a resident wasn't, didn't have the technical ability to do that, someone in your office still could do that. And it's much more direct than, you know.
So it takes care of not putting things on the webs, of things on the website because it's already there. Once, once it's been responded to, um, in, as a, as a request number, all those documents are there for people to click in and see. There are ways to make it private because there are some requests that you don't want to make public. So you can make some things private, but once you make it, um, once you make it public, it's, those things are there. Everyone can see all those documents. The thing I like about it too is that it's got, um, reminders in it. So it, it's already, um, it's pre-programmed with all of our, um, department heads and the custodians that we would have so that if I get a document, if I get a request, I can say, okay, that's so-and-so, it automatically goes out. So, so that custodian will get.
The request.
The request in their queue.
Yeah.
They can still see that it's been opened, they can click into it, they can add in information to it. And then when it's ready to finalize, I can finalize that there's due dates right there. Colors, green, yellow, red, so people know when they're getting close. It sends out extra remind, if someone's getting close to the due date and they haven't touched it, it sends me an alert, I can.
So hopefully, our, our, our hope would be that that would take away, so instead of having the, um, log, that, that will take away a lot of the tracking part of the, um.
To me, I think.
Of the job.
Right.
You'll still need a human being to be able to say, hey, wait a minute, there's still a request outstanding. Somebody needs to talk with the department of.
Just the ability to have everything in one spot will be.
Be very helpful.
And they, they do do, I, you know, it's, they do have, um, pre-canned responses that automatically get sent out to people. We can customize them to a certain extent. Kelly and I have been having ongoing discussions about how customized can responses be? It seems like every time we think we come up with a customized response, we're changing it and adding to it and taking away from it. So, you know, it, so it will be, you know, there are.
That could, that could be a never-ending process.
Yeah, but, I mean, but that, it'll be useful, it'll be very useful.
But one of these.
Because it automatically sends things out and that's part of the law, respond, getting a, getting something out, it's, it's part of the law, so that, it, it just helps.
And also for every one of those requests, there could be a trail of seven emails. Do you get my request? Can you confirm that you got my request? Can you confirm what the date is that you need to respond to the request?
I've seen some of them.
So this will help to clean, clean up some of the requirements so that we're at least tracking them and knowing when something might be going off kilter or as you see what the requests are. I mean, some of these might be, if you have three people requesting the same information, you know, we want to get that on the website as soon as possible. So it's a good way for us to be responsive, um, without having to add another level of workload to the town clerk's office.
And this is a company actually that developed this, we're already using for our dog system.
Oh, that's a good one. Yeah.
Our, our what?
Our dog.
A dog system.
Dog system.
Our doggy system. Our doggy system.
I'm not the brightest bulb in town.
I thought it was an acronym for something.
Because I said, I'm not the brightest bulb in town, but I got a couple of questions.
Direct is on, Gary.
If we agree that we're going to buy the software package, that gets added to this budget?
Yes.
Yes.
And if we agree that we're gonna hire the part-time worker, that gets plugged into this line later?
Yes, later in the process.
Yeah. Okay.
Those are great questions. Any other questions?
Uh, I'm happy. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you. Coming with the solution to these challenges.
Wasn't so bad, was it?
Not too bad.
Good job. I just have a final comment. I just think it's incumbent on us between now and the spring to let people who are not here every day know the degree to which these requests have been burdened with them and how they impact everything that goes on here in collateral services.
I live with this spreadsheet up on my computer every day. I'm constantly checking it.
She pops her head in at least once a day.
It's ugly. I don't see it getting...
We have that one due tomorrow.
I don't see it getting any better.
We spent, I spent at least four hours today working on this one.
But the, one of the ways for it to get, if not better, is getting manageable as far as the town hall to increase its capability to respond and to deal with these without it being disruptive and, and we're confident town hall plays our, being able to follow the law and be responsive and have a managed system to do it. It doesn't have that, that emotional, like, oh my God, another one...
Strikes, strikes me that she's had, because of the update of the, of the public records law, you and other town clerks all over have had to improvise in trying to figure out how to do it. And you got stuff all over your computer, I can see, uh, different kinds of files. This'll hopefully make you more productive and will allow you to spend more time doing things that you ought to be doing.
Right, right.
Look, that's just off of, I'm not sure that it's only going to get worse in the sense that already Beth's come up with her own processes to do it. I think the move is to put more things online. So if the things are online, there's a very quick response to it, the fact that it is online, and as we're looking at potential software here to do it. So we, it may get worse, but I have a feeling that this year, the learning curve, including the state's learning curve of what the processes are and learning what the laws are, as we point out, it's not all worked out.
I don't think it's...
We may be in the hump right now. It may, it may not get worse. It may not get better, but it may not get worse.
Well, I don't know if it's going to get worse.
It wasn't learning curves so much as demand.
I could change my, I could change my statement and it would remain the same. I don't think it's going to get any better. And I don't mean her job. I'm talking about the requirements for this stuff. That's not going to get any better.
The number of documents being produced in any given day is so enormous, especially now. And you also need someone to put them online too, by the way.
That's true.
And we have no website.
Part of the cross we bear, unfortunately. Okay, anybody else? You've done?
I'm done, thank you, sir.
You've done? Okay. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Kelly, do you see some offsets coming that could help us with the personnel? Twenty-five hundred dollars is money, but especially with personnel.
Potentially, you mean with respect to the town clerk's budget?
Well, maybe the town clerk's, but I don't, I'm not sure if there is. But I'm talking about overall, our, our budget responsibilities. You know, in the town, the selectmen's town?
No, we're running on a shoestring and anybody who says otherwise probably hasn't had the enormous amount of data to support that. And we show that every time we produce these documents for you and have, and put them online and review them with the department heads and with the FinCom. We are doing the best we can with what we've got in areas where we could be more efficient or effective or requires more resources. And unfortunately, that does cost money. The offset that I can think of that might impact this particular department that we're talking about is the town clerk's office. One potential offset could be, I'll give you an example. If we're able to charge for fees in order to reimburse us for the time for getting these records, that would be one potential offset. However, what we have found in experience is that whenever we produce a fee estimate, we're getting complaints to the secretary of state's office, taking objection to those estimates. And in the time that it takes us to get feedback about that, if I have to talk with town council to make sure we're doing everything appropriately, now we've already spent money on legal that would otherwise have stayed in the budget. So in this department, I could see the offset being, okay, if we could charge twenty... Oh, the other issue is that you're, you're not allowed to collect anything more than twenty-five dollars. Now, I told you today, I spent four hours on a public records request. Four hours of my time doesn't equal a hundred dollars. And that's, that's too bad, but that's the reality that we're in right now, is that I need to protect the town's best interests. And so I needed to spend that time collecting all the information that I have and working on that particular letter. And it had to be done and that was what I had to do. So four hours of my time for a public records request, I don't see that getting any better with the amount of demands that were faced with it. So the answer to your question unfortunately is no, unless there are services that you as a selectman want to bring. You know, that, that's really the essence of the budget process is you, you discuss what your priorities are and you acknowledge that there's costs and increasing costs to provide those services. It's not that simple anymore with Prop two and a half to say, oh, well, where can we cut? That's just not the reality we're living in. But that's just my personal opinion. We are trying wherever possible to ask questions and make sure that we can show that we're spending the limited resources we have to deliver the best services. But it's getting harder and harder and harder each year. So, hopeful agent Callis here.
We, we're missing Kulan.
Oh, he, I, he wasn't posted on the agenda. There was some confusion about whether he could make tonight or not. So because he wasn't on the agenda, I suggested that he would be moved. I apologize. Here's the new schedule. I asked that he be moved to Wednesday. And we have two openings on Wednesday, so I suggested that he would come at the very latest at five-fifteen on the Wednesday. So John is not here today, however, Councilon, Adrian Oliver will answer any questions we have about her budget. So let's find that and then we can have a discussion.
It is five forty-one.
Five forty-one. Paula, we have two sheets from you. One's your budget and the other is an explanation of the other expenses that are out of, yeah, out of the guidelines.
Right.
Do you want to give an overview?
Sure. Yep, it's pretty straightforward.
Bless you.
Bless you. The first, the seven-hundred-and-nine dollars we discussed last year when we decided to adopt the new tracking software, which is up and running and we're using consistently and it's helping us be more efficient as we try to maintain all the data that's being gathered because there's so much going on. So that's just the cost of the maintenance fee. So in effect, when we agreed to get this software last year, we agreed to take on this annual fee, which is, I know Beth just discussed it with the software she had. She's gonna, gonna have a subscription fee. Ours is not a subscription fee, which we can hire. It's, it's more of like technical support and things like that. So anyway, that's what the seven-hundred-and-ninety dollars is. And then the four-hundred-and-fifty dollars is just, reflects more accurately the actual postage costs for getting the newsletter to our constituents. Our mailing list is growing. It's actually been pretty consistent. I think the number was out of WAP before and it took me a year in this position to see that it's actually about two-hundred a month to mail out the newsletter. We do post it online. We are gonna move to an email, people that want it. Some people like the paper in hand. Actually, a lot of people like the paper in hand. So we'll do what we can to get that number down, but the actual cost of our postage amounts to twelve times two-hundred, which is twenty-four-hundred plus about a hundred for the postage meter. So our, the current number that's on the first page is off by four-hundred-and-fifty dollars, which is why you see that on B two.